Interview board, today is May twenty something, twenty fifth, twenty sixth of twenty twenty one. Call the roll, please.
Absolutely. Dr. Bob?
Here.
Mr. Egner?
Here.
We're waiting on Mr. Fergus. Mr. Manfred?
Here.
Mr. Overly?
Here.
Mr. Samanski is running a little late, but he should be here.
I'm, I'm here, I'm here right now.
Oh, great. Thank you. Perfect timing. You better came in when I said your name. That's amazing. And Mr. Way?
Present.
Thank you.
I'll call for approval of the meeting, of minutes from the last meeting. Did everybody have a chance to review them? Anyone wish to make a motion?
Motion to approve.
Call the roll again, Belkus?
Yes. Sorry. So PJ motioned and Mr. Way seconded. Okay. Dr. Bob?
Approve.
Mr. Egner?
Approve.
Mr. Manfred?
Approve.
Mr. Overly?
Approve.
Mr. Samanski?
Approve.
And Mr. Way?
Approve.
Thank you.
Okay, so on the old business, the first item on the agenda is EF twenty one dash oh four oh oh three, four sixty eight West Town Street. Staff report, please.
Yes, and I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen so you all can kind of read along with me if you'd like. Okay, so four six eight West Town Street is a two-story, single-family home structure within the Arts and Innovation Sub District. The applicant is proposing to convert the home into an office space with new dark gray fiber cement panels and vertical batten strips, dark gray fiber cement lap siding, light gray faux wood fiber cement ship lock siding accent, new block strained windows and doors, new light gray metal roof, black porch railing and overhead canopy, and a new ADA access lift in the rear. The existing chain link fence in the backyard will be removed and the wood fence will be repaired. And at the April meeting, the board approved this application on the condition that the applicant return for review and approval of the elevation. Board feedback focused on reducing the scale of the large fiber cement panels. And in response to board feedback, the applicant added smaller panels, which are sizes, the A and B sizes you see on the drawings, additional vertical batten strips, and additional vertical light gray siding panels to reduce the scale of the larger fiber cement panels, so C section C panels on the drawings. The applicant also added one window opening to the east and west elevations, changed the front canopy from light gray to black, and changed the color of the horizontal freeze board from white to light gray. So in looking at, well, first of all, here's the Google street view of the home. So this is the home here. You know, this is the corner along Town and McDowell. So just kind of looking at the exterior of the home here. And then in terms of their application materials, I quickly wanted to bring up the April materials just so we have a little bit of a refresher. I'm going to zoom in on this elevation. So you can see, you know, the larger panels here, the white freeze board, and you can see those vertical light gray strips there, and then the front elevation as well. And then I'm gonna go to their current submission package. So this is the site plan, which is unchanged from last month. Floor plan, which is also unchanged from last month. And then here is where we have some updates. So I'm gonna zoom in. So this is the rear of the house. So as you can see, we have some added A and B panels in addition to the C panel, which was the only one that was on the previous drawing. So they added some variety there. You can see the extension of that here. This window is new towards the right-hand side of here of this elevation. And again, the varied and smaller scale panels there. This is the rear porch. And then this is the front elevation. So again, you see these vertical siding accents, but more importantly, you see the addition of these smaller scale panels to kind of, you know, break up the scale. And this really helps a little bit more. So you see how the color changed of that freeze board from the white to a white gray. And then you also see here on the west elevation, again, you know, the more rhythmic pattern of these smaller boards. And then you see the addition of this window right here. So those are some of the updates. The applicant can speak to that more. They also provided some additional contextual photos and some precedent photos of what that panel could look like. So you kind of see the texture of those batten strips here and the varied paneling on this image here. So you can see what that would look like. And then here's another example as well of the mix-up of the panels. So after staff review, the proposal is consistent with the recommendations of the East Franklinton Creative Community District Plan. The plan recommends contemporary materials that, and that contributing buildings be preserved. So as such, staff support the proposal and recommend approval. Thank you.
Any questions for staff? Being none, the applicant ready to speak to us?
Yes.
And who's going to speak?
I will speak. From Architect Studio.
So just one of you?
Yes, I'll interject during the question period, but not during the.
Okay, so you need, I need to swear you in. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the best of your knowledge accurate and correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Can we take the pictures down, Belkus?
Absolutely.
So go ahead.
Thank you. Well, Ward, thanks so much for having us back. We're excited to kind of present to you our revised elevation scheme. Last, last month's generated some fruitful conversation for us to kind of go back and look at our existing proposed elevations. Mainly the proportions of the exterior plating was a, was a hot topic that we focused on this past couple of weeks. You'll see the revised elevation scheme having a, the lion's share of the changes being addressed to reducing that overall scale and proportion down. The, the ultimate goal, though, for the design was to kind of do more of a modern, modern spin on more of a contemporary kind of stagnant kind of board batten style, if you will. I think that the types of materials and the kind of the orientation that we have kind of outlines provided us and enabled us to kind of do that more unconventional way of installing these. And so it all kind of ties together both, both on the, on the thought and behind the scenes in the, in the construction of, of this, you know, this facade treatment. So, yeah, I really don't have a whole lot more to say. But Belkus' kind of description was very informative. I think hopefully that, that tells a lot of the story of what we want to do. Happy to, happy to answer any, any additional questions that, that you may have, though, regarding our new.
And I'm happy to bring up any, and I'm happy to bring up any elevations or drawings again. Just let me know and I'll, I'll pop them on the screen.
Bill, do you want to take over, Chan, now?
That's absolutely fine. Hello, everybody. Yes, count me as present. Sorry, it's a little late. Title business is crazy. Okay, so we'll make this simple. Do we have any, do we have any questions for the applicant?
I think first off, I appreciate the, the, the new look at this. I like the, I personally like the, the kind of random board and batten look that's being developed. My question, though, pertains to that freeze board that runs, that separates the first and second level. What, what is the purpose of that, I guess?
Yeah, so the purpose of the freeboard, freeze board actually, actually does, it's highly functional with regards to the, the batten system being working. You can imagine these, these batten strips sitting proud of the kind of the field paneling. And the separation between the second floor and the first floor, not having those battens all the way aligned with each other from first floor to second floor will, will create a kind of an ugly transition of both, both in a flashing component and, and I would say a looks, looks component. So again, it not only allows that panel separation to happen at, at that, that kind of rim joists height, but it also allows those battens to kind of dock into the side at the ends. So we can get that, we can get it all flashing and constructed properly.
Well, so my, my thought there is, I understand the functional purpose of it, that it's, it's basically hiding where those two panels tuck in behind. It gives you a place for the, the battens to complete themselves, but I feel like it sort of, I like the verti, the verticality of the, the battens. And I feel like that thing kind of chops it up into, you know, like, I, I sort of feel like the battens should be random but go all the way up to the roof. So it's basically, I get this, this kind of random pattern of battens that I'm, you know, you could break it up with that freeze board, but I would probably paint the freeze board or finish the freeze board the same color as the dark gray. That way, it's like, I, I get these verticals and I get random panel widths, but I'm not, I, I just think it's gonna get a little too busy if like the second floor random system is different from the first floor, is different from, I think on the backside, it changes again when, you know, when you get up to the, the gable piece. I, I feel like it would just be cleaner if, if, if you just got that random system working in alignment all the way, all the way vertically. And Bart, the one thing that I'd add to that, and I take your opinion as an architect more than mine, is, you know, the vertical elements with the window, is it possible to stop the freeze board so those read as larger vertical elements where you don't have the battens? And they kind, because it seems like that freeze board breaks up those vertical window elements, which can be a really cool design if that wasn't there.
I, I just want, and I, I'm sorry, this is, this is Belkus. I just want to jump in to make sure I'm understanding the comment. So are you saying that if the applicant were to change the color of that freeze board to match that like dark gray color of the facade, that this could be a supportable design? Just so it's more maybe seamless and, and it's not as choppy between the first and second floor?
Absolutely. I, I think it's just gonna be a much cleaner, cooler board and batten, you know, wrapper that goes all the way around this thing.
I understand. Thank you.
And I agree with, with the comment on the, the, the mid-height freeze board of stopping that under the windows where you've got the more traditional lap siding to a vertical, stop that and let that vertical lap siding go all the way up and continuous. I don't think that would create any kind of a, a water or flashing issue. It would allow, it would allow those vertical pieces to continue through. So I think both those, I think both those comments are, I agree with it.
Okay. Could, could we hear from the other members of the board on how we feel about those, those two elements with the freeze board? I'm just curious.
I'm getting a bit impartial on this detail.
Sorry?
I'm impartial on that detail. I'm gonna leave it to the architect.
I'll wait.
Sorry, Judy, what was that?
When I'm looking at this black and white diagram, especially the long side, the, the boards, it's all very choppy. I think what Bart was suggesting is that those lines all align, and I'm all for that. Right. See, there's, there's a couple of them that just go on the up, up story and don't come down. And then there's one on the lower story that doesn't go up. It maybe has to be that way because of the layout of the boards, but it does look choppy. Otherwise, I'm fine.
I'm. To clarify my, to clarify my point, I think I agree with Bart in painting the freeze board to match everything, to give it a little more consistency and not break it up. Although on the front of the building, it, it really is a good landing spot for those canopies to, to be placed there. But the, I, I'm less concerned about the choppiness from the second floor to the first floor. And this putting, adding standardization to a randomized pattern, I'm hit or miss. I can, I can leave or take. I, I don't, I don't mind there being a difference between the first and second floor. But I agree with Bart with, with the different color of that freeze board. It kind of is a little more jarring. And I think if that's painted the same color, I think it will help the overall aesthetic.
Okay.
I, I could take, I could take or leave the standardizing the vertical battens. That, I will leave that more to the architect than, than to me. But it doesn't, it doesn't, it certainly doesn't bother me.
Okay.
So sorry, would the board be comfortable with, you know, let's say this, this is approved on the condition that staff review and approve the freeze board being painted the same color as the, as the facade? Would that be an option?
And stopping in the vertical lap siding spaces in between windows?
I, I think we should ask the applicant if they're comfortable with these, these changes we're proposing.
Yeah.
That's, you know.
Yeah.
There was a lot of good effort in, in this proposal, and I really do like the direction it's going, but.
Bart, can I jump in and ask a question before the applicant? Because maybe the applicant can answer that, too. So if, if that freeze board is painted the same color as the siding, is there an issue with the fact that the battens that are on the upper floor that don't go all the way down? Is that, I'm just wondering if visually that might be disconcerting, that they, right now, the, the difference in color creates that break. So you can have a different batten spacing on the upper floor than on the bottom floor. Do you, you're, you're saying just leave it the way it is and paint the freeze board. Is that correct?
Are you asking me?
I wanted to clarify your point, yes.
Yeah, I'm saying paint the freeze board, and I think it's just gonna be a cleaner look to have the battens be random, but go, you know, they're in alignment first and second floor. So it's all, you know, the, to the point of the windows, the windows are like this vertical slot, which is really nice. But it goes first to second floor, so I feel like the battens ought to be part of that game, not, not fighting it.
So Bart, I'm still confused. So should the battens go all from, from first floor to second floor all the way and not be staggered?
They should not be, in my opinion, they should not be staggered. They're broken by the freeze board, but the freeze board would be the same color as the, the battens and the body of the building.
So, so now I, we can hear from the applicant if they have a comment on that.
Okay, we, yeah, trying to process, process everyone's kind of thoughts here. So obviously, the freeze board, from an architectural standpoint, does a couple of things. It does, it has a highly functional presence here from a, from a splitting of materials up from first floor to second floor. We looked at, we, we've done every color combination under the sun with this, including a darker, a dark gray freeze band essentially, that, that kind of just gets hidden with, with the rest of the sun. Honestly, after looking at it, it was very, it was almost like a swing and a miss as far as like, what is this thing doing here? It, it serves, it serves so much more than just, just from an aesthetic standpoint. We feel that it serves a, a, that separation between first and second floor really gives it more, it actually gives the battens more emphasis and the ra, the random pattern more emphasis where, you know, you have this, you have it to be the same color and you risk, I think you risk the overall intent being lost with what we're, what we're, what we're trying to do here to begin with. The, the idea of splitting the freeze board up, letting the, letting the, the plank siding run through will, will render that freeze board, that actually the intent of the freeze board kind of useless at that point. Just because it, you, you liked it, you would like to see that, that, that freeze board connect all four, all four facades together. It's really the only thing that does that. So there's some, we have to be careful if we're gonna do some of the, some of the changes and then not, and not consider some of the other changes. It's, it might turn into more of a Frankenstein of a, of a, of a project here. At least from an architect's standpoint. That was my, that'd be my comment on, with regards to the, what I've heard so far. Eric, do you have anything that you'd like to add?
Yeah, yeah. We, we have, we considered a lot of different options, including one that, that was exactly the, the same dark, this, this kind of slate gray color on the freeze board. And it was, it was almost immediately, it just, it didn't look right. I don't know, Steve, if you can easily pull that up? And with that version, we, that, we, we've, you know, we've had, I mean, frankly, hours of conversation trying to sort out the, the plan here and figuring out all these different options. Is this, is this the sort of thing that we, you know, as it stands would actually, you know, would be rejected by the board? As it stands, or, or, you know, what is the, I don't, I don't know exactly the protocol here in regards to, you know.
Do you like a drop?
I, I, I would support it as it stands as well. I, I understand Bart's comments. But I also, you know, I am not an architect. You are both architects creating this project. And Bart is, is one of the, the architects, you know, that is, that is looking at it from an architectural review standpoint. I don't take your opinion with, with, with a grain of salt with, when you say you've studied this for the last two weeks and, and doing a, a single color doesn't necessarily look right in your opinion. I, you know, I think that you telling us that you've taken our opinion in and you've looked at it, studied it, and it just doesn't feel good. I, I trust that you are being sincere when you say that. I, I, I do like your second submission better than last month's. I think that the, the comments that were made last month, you've taken to heart and, and this submission is, is, it feels more continual from a, from a full project standpoint. I think both Kim's and Bart's comments from last month were, were taken to, taken to consideration and applied here. I, I would approve it as it stands currently. I would leave it to, to the architects on our board to, to, to kind of give feedback and whether you want to take it or not. But I think both Judy and I would, would be in approval. I don't know how the others would stand.
I, I'm supportive of it the way it is. I did have one other comment, though, and that is the, the base block, the sandstone. I just find all of a sudden it's a clash with this kind of rich kind of array of grays. And I would ask the, I guess I'm asking the applicant, why did you pick the sandstone? And when I looked at, when I look at your colored elevation of the front, it has a gray on that back piece. And I didn't know if that was just a rendering issue, or is it all supposed to be sandstone color, or is there a mixture?
The back is, so the back is, it's, it's more, that's more of a rendering issue with the way that it came together. So the, if you can go, Belkus, if you can go back to the original picture or the existing photos of the.
Oh, yeah.
Where we are, where it stands currently today. The intent was to clean that, and I think just give it, give it a once-over as far as tuck pointing as needed. You know, there's, it's just more of a natural stone color that I think we could probably maintain as much as possible. I don't know if we're in the business of painting stone. I think obviously it needs some work from a, from a, you know, you know, just from a longevity standpoint. But, you know, I think that we'd rather just let a, a stone be a stone color and call it a day. I think it's got a nice, a nice kind of natural tone to it that we can probably keep and maintain.
Thanks for the, the clarification. I, I was thinking that was a new block and I didn't realize, I guess I missed that part, that you were just restoring the existing foundation. I think if you look at the photographs, that the color is much different than what you have in your rendering. And I'm much happier with that look, that color. I think that will match the rest of the building better. So I'm, I'm okay with that. And I'm, and again, I appreciate.
Less browns and reds.
Yeah. I, and again, I appreciate the, the, the work that you've done since the last meeting. I think you definitely have broken down that scale that I was concerned about, and I, I just, I think it's much more successful. I can't argue the freeze. I like the staggering top and bottom, and I think the freeze helps to mediate that. And so I'm, I'm okay with that.
Can I just throw one more, I guess, thought or question out there? For some reason, these vertical elements of the window bother me only from the aspect of when there's no window, like on this elevation we're looking at now where there's no window below. What would be the thought of just on that lower segment where we're not connecting the windows? To let that be regular board and batten rather than continuing that siding material down? Or do we want all windows to read as this whole vertical element even when there's not a window on that lower level? Just throwing out a thought to ask if that was looked at.
When you say regular board and batten?
Yeah, just because on that lower, it, it, it feels weird that we carry that, carry that horizontal siding down where there's no window. Otherwise, it reads as it's an element underneath a window. And it just happens that there's two windows stacked that you're, you're continuing that. But otherwise, it feels like when you're doing it where there's no window, you're trying to create this vertical element that seems to be interrupted by a horizontal element for, I mean, I know it's for an architectural purpose.
So why not just break the freeze board there is what you're saying?
Let the free, and then underneath is just the regular board and batten. It's not the horizontal siding. Because it's really then reading as this, this horizontal siding is an element underneath windows, and some of those just happen to be stacked. I, I would, I would agree too, that I think that, that west elevation plays it out the best, you know, that, you know, like I, I like the idea that that's a, a kind of vertical gap that collects the windows, and sometimes there isn't a window, but, you know, you replace it with that horizontal siding to kind of say it's a, it's a slot that goes all the way up. And I think it also, while I would not disapprove this project as presented, I agree with the others. I'll just take one more swing at it. I think, I, I just think intuitively, I feel like it is going to be less busy and less stacky. I'm, I'm a little concerned about the second floor looking like it got stacked on top of the first floor, the roof looking like it got stacked on top of that. It's just making a very small building very busy when I think it could be a little more elegant. The, the technique of this random board and batten could be much more elegant. That's my last, that's my last swipe at it, but I, I would certainly approve it as presented.
So Bart, could I take a, could I take a swing at it?
Yeah.
Could I propose to approve as submitted and allow for the, the applicant to study the Bart's comment of removing the. the applicant to study the Bart's comment of removing the 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 standard lap siding where there are no windows on the first floor and replace it with the standard board and batten. If the applicant feels that there is a, there is a benefit to their aesthetic, if not, it can be approved as is. If so, it can be approved by staff.
Can you clarify that, TJ?
I think I know where he's coming from.
It was, it it would be, it would be.
I'm gonna jump in.
Okay, help, help me.
I'm gonna jump, I'm gonna jump in and and uh say what I heard. So I'm hearing that um TJ is motioning to approve the application. And if the applicant decides to change any of the facade um ideas that any other board members had, that those updates could be staff approvable since the board has discussed and suggested them.
Yeah, I agree with that. That's what I thought I heard.
Okay.
I would agree with that. I think I think you're gonna you're gonna get in the field with this and you'll start putting up those battens and you might, you know, there might be some site, you know, field adjustments to this.
So so.
Right.
Okay, so back, back, sorry, Belkus, uh. So back to the motion, uh we have a motion on the floor. We do need a second, in which case we can then have further discussion. Do I have a second?
Right here.
Okay.
Okay.
Seconded, do we have any further discussion now?
I don't know what was sec- what was, I still don't understand. We're letting staff approve changes to it after we vote for it.
Yeah, in other, in other words, the motion the motion, Kim, is to approve as submitted, provided that the applicant can make changes in accordance with uh to these certain elements in accordance with that which has been discussed by the board uh subject to staff approval of those changes. That's the motion.
It sounds a little vague to me, but Belkus, you think that's doable?
Kim, do we want, do we want to limit those to continuing only vertical battens instead of the offsets? Painting the freeze board to match in color and to remove the lap siding in vertical window sections where there is no window. And and allow the, and allow the applicant to kind of play with those three things a little bit. And if they feel any of those have positive benefit to their aesthetic, they can submit those and be approved by staff.
My, and my concern with that is it's the, it's the removal, does it go all the way up to the window on the second floor or just up to the freeze board that you would change that?
Just, just on, just on, just on the lower section to the freeze board where there are no windows.
Okay, I need, we need that clarified in the language, just so that.
Okay. Does, does the applicant understand that and think that that is a a fair approval?
Belkus, you want to read back what you think you have?
Yeah, so I have that um the, there is a motion to approve the application as is or as presented. And that staff would be able to review and approve any changes to the vertical lap siding on the first floor only. Um allow uh for the freeze board to be painted to match the existing facade and to play around with or change the um, the, what are they called? Batten strip? To allow for the batten strips to continue um from top to bottom, you know, straight up and down.
Horizontal ones that are where there is no window.
Yeah, the la- the the ver- the horizontal lap siding on the first floor only.
Okay. All right, uh that is the modification. Do we have a second to the motion as modified?
I'll second it.
Okay, Judy seconded that. Uh it's been moved and seconded. Do we have any further discussion?
Did any of that confusion make sense to the applicant?
Makes a hundred percent sense to me.
All right.
Thanks. We appreciate all the, we appreciate all the uh the conversation on this, so we just, we want to make sure we get it right for everybody.
Great.
Good deal. All right. If there is no further discussion, uh let's call the question. Belkus, call the roll, please.
Dr. Bach? Mr. Egner? Mr. Fergus?
Abstain.
Mr. Manfred?
Approve.
Mr. Overly?
Approve.
Mr. Samansky?
Approve.
And Mr. Way?
Stain.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it. We'll see you.
Thanks.
Okay, moving on. I'm gonna read a staff application into the record. It is uh EF twenty-one zero five zero zero one. Address four sixty-two West Broad Street. The applicant is Day Night Sign Company and the owner is Gravity Project LLC, and we are approving, staff approved, the Roosevelt Coffee Window Graphics. Next up on our agenda, uh we have a a presentation for Link US East-West Corridor. Uh Belkus, you want to go ahead with this?
Yeah, um so we have Zach Sunderland here with us today, and he is a project manager at Cota, and he is one of the points um leading the Link Us project, uh which is for um rapid transit along our main corridors, and he's here today to present um a little bit more information about the project and specifically speak to the East-West Corridor, um part of which will take place along West Broad Street. So I'll hand it over to Zach, and Zach, feel free to share your screen if you need to. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thanks, Belkus. I will try to share my screen here. Can you see the slide? All right, are the, are the note, notes page hit, hit, and I ran into an issue before. Full screen?
I I don't see any notes.
Okay, great. Um so thanks for having me uh this afternoon. My name is Zach Sunderland. I am project manager with Cota. Um specifically project manage for, manager for the East-West Corridor project um as a part of uh Link, the Link Us initiative as Belkus mentioned. Um, you know, first I want to back up and I, some of this information may be uh repetitive to what some of you have heard, but I wanted to just provide a little bit of background about the Link Us initiative and kind of where it came about. Um, you know, back in twenty fourteen, Morp C looked at the region um and looked at, you know, one million more people would be moving uh into the region by the year twenty fifty. Um in twenty seventeen, Cota looked at that growth and looked at um what Cota's network could look like with transit uh in the region, identify new service, new lines, technology improvements, and um most importantly, to what we're talking about today, identified fourteen different corridors suitable for high capacity transit. One of those corridors being West Broad Street. Um each one of those corridors were looked at um for a feasibility analysis to see um what mode made the most sense, and so um each of the modes were bus rapid transit, light rail transit, giving a rail and streetcar. And then in twenty nineteen, uh Morp C took the information from the Insight twenty fifty plan with the growth. Um combined with uh the corridors identified in Next Gen to really look at uh one million more people moving in the region and facilitating or focusing that growth along those specific corridors. Um in the Insight twenty fifty corridor concepts, which I'm sure some of you participated in the those engagement processes. Uh West Broad Street was identified as one of the corridors in that um study. Then in twenty twenty, uh the Link Us initiative um formed based on all that, all those previous studies. Really a partnership between uh City of Columbus, Cota, Morp C, and Franklin County. Um and really, it's a holistic approach. So while we're, you know, primary focus is the high capacity transit along those corridors. We're also looking at how people get to those corridors, whether that's biking, walking, or green space. And then um, you know, looking at that, uh the development patterns, you know, over the past several decades, we've continued to grow further and further out. Focusing that growth along those key corridors, combining the uh growth with the transit. So the first two corridors that got off the bat here were the Northwest Corridor, which the city is a project led by the City of Columbus, but I'm Cota, Morp C, and Franklin County Art Partners in that. Um the first phase of pre-project development is wrapping up now um for that project, uh identifying an alignment along Olentang River Road and with the downtown connection, which I will cover in a couple of slides. Um but then most applicable to, uh you know, Franklin Ten is the East-West Corridor, um which is a project led by Cota um with a primarily, primary goal to get into the Federal Transit Administration's um capital investment grant program, so we can uh receive funding for um these future uh infrastructure improvements. So again, this is similar to the previous slide. Um also want to identify the the C-Max, which is our our BRT Light project, which uh Cota rolled out in service in January of twenty eighteen. We're really looking to build off of uh what was done with the C-Max. One of the elements that is not included in the C-Max is that dedicated right-of-way, which is a key component to, you know, increasing transit speeds and making it a reliable uh viable transportation mode. Um and then on the the east side here, so uh you know, West Broad Street um was one of those corridor corridors identified in the Next Gen process. Part of the East-West Corridor is looking at that twenty-mile stretch uh all the way from Prairie Township on the west side through the Franklin County, Licking County line on the east side. So we're looking at, um we're doing an alternatives analysis between Broad Street and Main Street to see which of those corridors uh makes the most sense to directly tie in the West Broad Street. If East Broad Street is determined, uh likely the alignment would remain on Broad Street in the downtown area. Um if Main Street is determined to be most feasible to be directly tied in the West Broad Street, um there'll have to be a connection point, um would be downtown, either utilizing High Street or Third and Fourth. Zooming in, uh specifically to the convergence between the Northwest Corridor and the East-West Corridor. Um as part of the Northwest Corridor uh process, um there were four different alignments uh considered to connect from uh kind of the Grandview Yard area at Goodell and uh Twin Rivers down to downtown. Um two of the alignments primarily in the Arena District and one of the alignments using solder straight down to Broad Street. The alignment that is um the best fit so far is the alignment um you see on the screen, which is that blue line. Um which is the most direct uh connecting, getting just downtown the quickest. Also keeping in mind that, you know, the that green line at the bottom, which is the East-West Corridor. So kind of looking at the converges between the two, where the East-West Corridor serves Franklinton area, the Scioto Peninsula, while the Northwest Corridor serves uh Grandview Yard, um the future true development in Astro Park Arena District, and then both of them converging in the downtown area. Then of course, Cover My Med is kind of strategically located between the two corridors. Also want to highlight, uh you know, that that line there with uh Columbus Parks and Rec looking to, or not looking there. Moving forward with constructing a uh trail connection over the Scioto River, um and keeping that in mind uh in between those two areas. Now pivoting a little bit, specifically talked about the East-West Corridor. Um so we began this process back uh in fall of last year, actually late summer of last year. Um with a goal in mind, like I said, to get to that locally preferred alternative. Coming up with the most suitable mode, alignment, and station locations, and then to submit our um our letter to entry into that FDA grant program. Um so we're currently kind of wrapping that up. We're in the detail evaluation. Um and we're wrapping up our our technical group and our stakeholder groups and our public engagement and wrapping that all in at the same time. Um so again, looking at the East-West Corridor, twenty-mile stretch, very diverse. I know you guys are looking at, you know, uh building details, so this is a little bit a I I guess a macro level view here. Um we broke the corridor into ten different segments based on, you know, it's a very diverse uh set from one end to the other. Dealing with different um right-of-way constraints, um different uh municipalities, particularly on the east side. We're not just within the City of Columbus, we're also within the City of Beckslay, Whitehall, Reynoldsburg, and then also townships on the east side and west side. Um so is uh, you know, breaking it into corridors to see what is the boat best fit for each of these segments. Like I mentioned, um we looked at, uh in the Next Gen, we looked at uh mode for each of these corridors. Um synonymous with the the work in the Next Gen, Bus Rapid Transit was deemed to be the most feasible for this corridor, the best fit. Um looking at anticipated ridership and being um fairly competitive in that FDA grant program, uh makes uh Bus Rapid Transit the best fit. So, you know, when we talk about Bus Rapid Transit, like I said, um you know, the C-Max is, as an inter- industry standard, is considered Bus Rapid Transit Light. It's lacking some of these elements that we're really looking to do as part of these Link Us corridors. Um the most being that dedicated right-of-way, uh keeping the vehicles on time and reliable, especially with the growth coming into the region and more people um using their car, trying to shift more to those uh those trips onto transit. Other elements commonly seen in a Bus Rapid Transit that we're looking to do, a level of multi-door boarding, so um currently, if if you ride the Line Ten along Broad Street or any other uh curb service, the vehicles have to dwell down, uh takes time to board. Also, if there's a wheelchair, the wheelchair ramp has to be deployed with level boarding. Um the the wheelchairs can roll right on and those vehicles have, they don't have to um go down to pick up each each passenger on the uh those curb differences. Other elements is off-board fare collection where the, this currently occurs today, um where every passenger boards uh the front door of the bus at certain stops, particularly at like Broad and High, um when there's ten or fifteen people boarding at once, it can definitely slow down um board um boarding times and uh just make those travel times uh much longer. So while facilitating those activities uh before the vehicle arrives at those stations, um passengers can board on either of those uh doors on the vehicle to to speed up those times. Other elements, signal priority and intersection control where um, you know, as a a transit vehicle is approaching, uh lights can turn to green when a a vehicle is carrying, you know, forty to sixty people, um giving that priority to uh people. Um and then other elements of BRT is modern vehicle designs like articulated vehicles. Um currently, our our largest vehicles in our fleet right now are forty-footers. Um common, commonly around the country, we see uh Bus Rapid Transit using sixty, sixty-foot articulated vehicles, which is increasing that capacity. Um the big one, transit supportive development. Um so if if you are familiar with Cleveland's Health Line, um it began service in two thousand eight. Uh they've seen a a nine-point-five billion dollar investment along that corridor, so really facilitating that growth along those key stations, um along those corridors. Um and then lastly, enhanced stations. So, you know, currently we have uh stops or poles in the ground. Uh sometimes we have shelters based on the ridership. But really, um having limited stops and where those stops are located, having enhanced stations, um safer wa- waiting environments and protected from the elements, those sort of features. Uh and I wanted to put this together just to illustrate, I mean, our current service today. Um like I said, we have the Line Ten operating on Broad Street today. Uh it's our frequent service, one of our more higher ship ridership routes. Um but additionally, we also have our Line Twelve operating from our McKinley Garage on McKinley Avenue uh down Solder Avenue along West Broad Street connecting to downtown. So really, this stretch of uh West Broad Street um has two different lines um currently today. Um generally, our our stops are spaced quarter mile apart, sometimes eight hundred feet. Um so um if if you ride today, uh often if you're riding all the way from the west side or, you know, Westgate area or even the casino area, um sometimes those vehicles have, they stop at every stop because there's boardings that occur there. Um a part of Bus Rapid Transit is uh looking at those boardings and facilitating them at certain stations, key key locations to help speed up those travel times, speed up those boarding times, um and make it just quicker travel time altogether. Initially, in our analysis, um looking at, you know, half a mile spacing, uh Solder Avenue and uh Bell Street outside Korsai and the VA are identified as potential station locations. Um but as, you know, development occurs and growth happens, you know, we'll, we'll want to make sure that these are the right locations for stations. So really, the the three different options we're looking at for Guideway is um, this first picture is a mixed flow concept, which is similar to what we do today. Um similar to what that uh C-Max on along Cleveland Avenue has. Um but the other options we're looking at is um more dedication. So um this is a illustration that's your dedicated curbside, so um similar to to mixed traffic, the biggest difference being that that lane, the outside lane is dedicated to transit. Um other areas and uh systems, they call that a bat lane, which is business access and transit, so it does allow those uh turning vehicles. And then the third concept is the dedicated center median. Um this is similar to uh what the Cleveland Health Line has and also um our peers in Indianapolis, uh they rolled out their red line with with center boarding. And really, through our public processes, we've been, um the public and the stakeholders have been really pushing for uh that more dedication to have that more um premier uh like transit. Now I did just want to uh show kind of the travel time comparisons, the benefits of that dedication. Now I did just want to uh show kind of the travel time comparisons, the benefits of that dedication. So um, this is specifically uh Westgate Avenue, so on the hilltop, uh to Broad and High Street along West Broad. Um, so this middle segment here, segment three from Franklinton, so our segment three, um I know this is specifically East Franklinton. But really we're talking from uh Interstate 70 and Broad to um the, the railroad tracks, you know, the edge of, of Franklinton there between uh Scioto Peninsula. So um, looking at these three different options that we're considering. Um, mixed traffic, uh estimated seven minutes from that stretch. Curbside lane, uh five minutes, 30 seconds, and then uh the center median having the most time savings at four minutes and 30 seconds. Looking at that stretch from, you know, hilltop to um high and broad, I'm comparing it to our local bus route, which is um scheduled time is 19, 22 minutes. Uh, sometimes it's dependent on, you know, with, since we don't have that dedication today, sometimes that can be uh less reliable. But really, uh when you're having that dedication, it makes it much more reliable and it can have quicker travel times. Um, and then comparing it with the personal car, if you're making that trip along Broad, eight to 20 minutes. Um, the farther you're out on uh likely that you can, you can deviate onto the freeway. So just keeping that in mind that um, you know, uh the advantage of having a personal vehicle and trying to give um transit a little bit incentive there with that dedication. And uh this is just to illustrate um specifically that there's not really much difference in, in the downtown segment four of center lane and curbside, and that's just because there are less, um, there are less uh, you know, business access downtown. This is generally just the intersections that you're dealing. So like I said, um, we have a stakeholder group and a technical group that we've been meeting throughout the process. Um, we've also had some public engagement. We had uh five different meetings in February. Um, we had an opportunity, uh we had a learn inspire sessions, which is more informative than we also had workshop, workshop style, we call it a co-create sessions. We had some great input from those. Um, we had an open survey from February through April, about 400 responses. And um, we had a roadshow and we actually were at the uh Franklinton Fridays a couple of weeks ago. Um, we talked to 150 different people at, at that event. It was great uh input to hear um people's thoughts on the East-West Corridor project. Um, we also have a virtual open house on our website if you want any more information. And then this next slide really just shows some of those outcomes from that initial survey, which is um pretty similar to what we've heard through these public meetings. Really looking at priorities, um people want faster and more frequent service, affordable and on-time and reliable. Um, and really, we're really getting quick to have that dedicated uh premier type of transit um as part of this project. Um, that kind of concludes my slides, so I'm, I'm willing to answer any questions if there are any. And if there aren't, or if you want any more information, you're welcome to visit the website, slinkuscolumbus.com. Um, we also have a YouTube page where you can view um similar to this meeting, meeting taped. We have some, some other meetings. Um, if you're um want to listen to and find out any more information.
Thank you so much, Zach. That was really wonderful. Um, are there any questions for Zach?
Yeah. Hey Zach, thanks for, thanks for the presentation. That was great. And I was hoping to get to see it along with the rest of the board. Um, I, I, you, you took down the slides, but on slide 11, it had the two black stars. Was that the two stops that are being proposed in?
Right, yeah. I can pull it up again, but yeah, those are the preliminary station locations. Um, you know, um, as part of the initial analysis, we had to come up with those locations to go through that, you know, ridership projections. So initially those are, yeah, those are um solder and um Bell.
So in doing that, does that, does that eliminate all of the other stops? Or is there still the more local bus service running in addition to like an express?
Yeah, that's a great question. So um initially um, so this area is a little bit different. So when I usually have that slide, um we don't have like the line 12 that's on it. So we will still have that line 12, those stops in service.
There was a blue line down in Land Solder.
Right. But additionally, um, you know, we are, through this process, we are looking at an underlying local, like a line 10 that would operate um likely every 30 minutes or 60 minutes. So that's what we're doing along Cleveland Avenue now. With that being said, um, it is more operation and maintenance costs, uh if you have that kind of duplication of service. So it is something we would look into um closer to implementation, but um, you know, still looking to have those. Um, you know, since the stations are further apart, then they are now looking at how people uh still, you know, access that.
But, but it's unlikely that we would have a super station within the remit of what our board reviews, which is from 3:15 to the railroad tracks. That's going to be free of any kind of major superstation stops. Is that correct?
So far, um, that, those are the stations that have been identified. If, um, I mean, I know that there's a lot of development happening, for instance. Um, you know, after us looking at this station, we know that there is a, a new 15-story um affordable housing building being uh put up at uh what, Giff Street? So as, as um we go through our design phase and this kind of next process, which would be beginning later this year, looking at um making sure that those station locations make the most sense. You know, through, um, it was discussed when we looked at that Bell Street stop. Um, to see if that could be shifted further west, closer to those railroad tracks. And we know that the Gravity 1, Gravity 2 buildings. Um, it would be advantageous to kind of, you know, meet in the middle there. It's, it's always like kind of push and pull though, because you want to get close to destinations as well. And obviously the work happening um at the Scioto Peninsula. So um, you know, I, I'm here to take any feedback you guys have um regarding station locations. I know that you guys do have a pretty short stretch along Broad Street, but um, yeah, so I'm, I'm open to any uh, any feedback you have.
Well, the stations may not be good.
The, both of those stops are within walking distance of all, all of our Broad Street pretty much. So that's probably not an issue. And I think I, I was interested to know if there was any stops that would, might impact the way that we looked at and evaluated projects. But I think the bigger, the bigger um issue for the board is that Broad Street is a future growth corridor, and that's why the city wants to invest money in rapid transit, because they want uh density and growth to happen along these corridors. So we as a board shouldn't um be afraid to think about density as we're evaluating projects, because the infrastructure is going to be invested in to support that growth and density. So I just want to make that point. Sorry Bart, go ahead.
No, I, I was only going to say that the uh, the super cool buses that you uh, that you showed us are going through the East Franklinton Arts District. So I assume we would get to approve those super cool buses.
Good point.
We will, uh, we will have input, yes, uh open for those. So obviously, um, I, I, I think uh a, a lot of people, you know, you look, it's interesting now because our fleet generally have 12 years of our, our fleet and um, so our oldest buses on the street right now are 2010 buses and they're um, they're a little boxier. Uh I think people joke that they're like a stick of butter sometimes. So, um, you know, there's, there's newer 2021 buses are a little bit more sleeker. Um, but as a part of this, we would look at um new vehicle types. We don't have those 60-foot buses with our articulated in the middle. It has the, you know, the bendy part, so it can make turns. Um, and uh, you know, additionally, we are piloted, we are piloting, um, piloting uh electric buses. Um, not specifically for this, but um you're trying, I think we're getting through buses in the near future to kind of uh test out that technology, also learn from our peers who have gone the electrification route. So looking to things like that as well.
Zach, I think my, my only uh follow-up to, to Kim's point is um, is, is that there is easy walkability from our little stretch abroad to either one of those new stops. But there were, in, in that little section that you showed, 14 stops that these two super stops uh take over. And there are a, a lot of people, especially not as much anymore in the East Franklinton area, but as you move west, there are a lot of, a lot of people with mobility issues and uh, and higher age that, that probably are not walking a, a quarter of a mile to a half a mile to a stop or further to a super stop. Um, I, I think there'd be some significant pushback from a majority of the everyday riders if there was, you know, it, it doesn't help them if they go from a, a 20-minute bus ride to a four-minute bus ride if they add a 15-minute walk. That, that doesn't necessarily help them on the, on the bus route.
Yeah, that's a, that's a great point. So um, and then further west, so we had solder and then Central Avenue would be the stop. Um, additionally, I know that's Franklinton, but I know you guys are specifically looking at East Franklinton, but yeah, you know, that is a great point. Um, looking in, it's a huge difference to what we have now, um, because, you know, our, we do have stops that are, have more boardings than others, but at the same time. Um, you know, you can, if it's the, the way that there's space now, you can go to the stop that's closest to you and it's not as far. Um, so looking at how do people make that last mile trek. Um, you know, I did mention that we'll be looking at the underlying local, um, but also, you know, as, as we progress through this process, uh there's a, a new kind of service we have called Coda Plus, um, which is operated, really zoning Columbus right now is the south side, but um generally, if you're not familiar with the concept, um, it's similar to um, you know, Lyft and Uber where you can um request uh a vehicle, usually there's, there're tinier vans on an app and then they can pick you up from your, you know, point A, um, from your residence or your business and bring you to um uh those fixed transit lines as a, you know, kind of a first last mile. Um.
That's great.
Let me weigh in just a little bit. I'm in the age group that um.
No, you're not.
Oh, yes, I am. When 2050 comes around, I'll be 102. Um, I, I think what's real here though, my neighborhood, everybody has room to park a car and we're going to be the last people to give up our cars. Down in East Franklinton, you've got Gravity 1, Gravity 2, Homeport, and Lord knows what else, all within walking distance of somewhere in that corridor. And I think if we try and build this sort of thing for Judy Box, that's a waste. We need to build it for the density that's coming.
That was not what I expected to hear from you, Judy.
No, well, I've changed my mind in the last five minutes. But the other thing that's important here is um Souda, you've got to be deciding what the hell you're going to do with Souda. It's a walking trail at the moment. I got to get this. I'll mute myself.
Zach, Zach, the, is the, your, your slide that showed the different time, uh, the different times with the express line versus the traditional and the traditional being 19 to 22 minutes and the express being four. I mean, is that, what does that really even mean? If, if you were to take the, the traditional line now and remove 10 of the 14 stops, would that not also significantly speed up the, the, the transit from a bus from, from one stop to another or from one end line to the, the next? It's not necessarily apples to apples there, is it?
Um, I'm, I'm not sure. You're, you're asking that if um the mixed traffic concept um compared to what we have today, is that you're asking what's the advantage there?
You're, you're today's corridor from one, from one stop to the end. I can't remember what the endpoints were, but from one stop to the other was, was currently 19 to 22 minutes. And the center, the center lane next traffic with the, with the super stops was now, did that include the super stops or was that, was that with the center lanes with all of the traditional stops? And was it more apples to apples like that? Or was that only assuming the two stops that you showed in the, the following slide or the previous?
Yeah, let me pull it up again. So are you able to see the screen?
Yeah.
Okay, so um, so yeah, so the, the local 10, that's currently today, so 19 to 22 minutes from that hilltop stretch to Broad.
And that's, and that's with, and that's with 20-some stops or whatever it is.
Correct. And I, like I said too, um, we've received this in uh, in our public meetings that even though that's the scheduled time, doesn't mean that you know, it's, it's dependent on the traffic too or any issues, right? So it can be longer than that. I've heard 30 minutes before. Um, so then that, when you look at that mixed traffic, you're taking, the time savings is the limited stops. It's, it's uh, you know, uh, a minute to four minutes quicker, limited stops. You can still look at those uh transit signal priority elements. Um, so that, that's kind of the big time savings there. Um, with the dedication, you, you get the, the best, you know, time savings with all those elements combined.
Sure.
Um, in the interest of time, um, I think if, if anyone has any other questions, maybe we could just email Zach. Um, with the email that he provided at the end of the presentation. Um, but yeah, I thank you so much, Zach, for your time today. I know you're probably busy and have a lot of other things to do, but.
Zach, thank you for showing, for running us through.
Yes, thank you very much, sir.
Thanks, Jack. Great, thanks. I appreciate it.
Okay. So Belkus, you have a staff announcement for us.
I do, I do. Um, I wanted to let you all know that uh sometime this summer, I'm going to be transitioning to staff the university area board. Um, so that means I'll be transitioning away um from the East Franklinton Review Board to, to make that switch. Um, but Stephanie, who's on the call, uh will be the new staff person for the East Franklin Tenure Board. So this won't be my last month. Um, I think the switch might happen um around July, I believe. But um, I just wanted to, to kind of let you guys know of, of that switch that's going to be taking place. So, yeah.
Okay, well.
But Belkus, maybe we'll see you there. We're doing a, we're doing our project there right now. We got to go through this month with that or next month in June, so.
Okay, yeah. Yes, yes. I'll be um at the June uh university meeting to run it as like practice with the current staff member, but I'll still be here um for the June meeting for East Franklinton. So it's looking like maybe July will be, I'll pass the baton off to Stephanie. So, yeah.
I'll know all of Bel, all of Belkus' pinch points and what she wants.
Well, thank you, Belkus. We hardly got to know you. Oh.
Belkus, you know what you're getting into?
Yeah.
Start, no.
Well, yeah.
The university.
Ooh.
Oh, um, you know, I, I've heard some stuff, but I, you know, we'll see. I'll take it as it comes. And I know there's always different personalities on different boards, but I'm excited for the opportunity and you know, it's good for staff to have a, a very aggressive experience on, on different boards and commissions. So I'm excited for the opportunity, but I'll miss all of you, obviously. So, yeah.
You, you have, you have Frank over there.
Yeah, we, we don't, we uh, we operate on consensus. I don't know how the other boards operate, but uh we don't seem to disagree about very much here. Uh, okay. So I think that's, I think we're, unless anybody else has anything to add, uh, we are done today. Um, our, we have a possible, Belkus, we're going to need this business meeting on the ninth?
No, you won't need it.
Okay. Well, then our next regular meeting will be Wednesday, June 23rd at 3:00 PM via WebEx again. Hopefully we'll be in person one of these days. Uh, till then, we stand adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye.